Pretty right. Thanks Luke. Thing we got today is the rule call. And we'll do that.
I got it down here. All right, Commissioner O'Brien.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Present.
Commissioner Devlin. And Chair Osborne is absent and Commissioner Fernandez is absent.
We have a special presentation. Since none. General public comments. This is the time for the public comments regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of line Commissioner Wierica. Public comments period is not intended to be questions and answer period or conversations with the commissioners or city staff. Mess commissioners when recognized by the chair may ask questions for the presenter, but no action may be taken by the planning commission during the public comment section of the meeting. Except to direct staff there or place an item on future agenda.
Have a staff and commissioner comments.
Staff, staff and commissioners comments. The whole business.
Consent agenda. Think your two pages are sticking together there.
Oh, they are. Okay, here we go. All matters under listed under the consultant's agenda are considered routine and non-conversable and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of commission wishes to remove an item for discussion. From men open for member of the public wishes to comment on the agenda.
And so do you want to read off what the consent items?
Approval of minutes.
Yep.
Okay, approval in minutes, the regular meeting, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. I'm making pushing to approve the minutes. For the second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Public hearing, none, whole business.
Yeah, just the title.
M C dash two twenty-one dash zero one objective design standards ordinance.
All right. Thank you. So this is a returning item. So we had a public hearing a couple of months ago, I believe back in June, July. Um, I can get you the exact date as we go through the staff report. So the staff report begins on page six. And so we went back and provided more information. So just in summary for the general public. This item is in response to recent state housing legislation pertaining to streamline development review and objective design standards. Um, in two thousand twenty, the city of Wairika sought out and was awarded Senate Bill two planning grant dollars by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. To develop the objective design standards for the city. The purpose of that grant is to assist cities and counties with projects to increase housing production and streamline permit applications. One of the activities, as I said before, was to create an objective design standard ordinance. That meets the requirement of the Senate Bill thirty-five, also known as government code section sixty-five, nine, one, three point four. The adoption of an objective design standard ordinance would streamline the application process for multi-family housing projects that request it. With the assistance of a planning consultant E core, a draft of the design ordinance is prepared for planning commission and city council approval. So last time we had brought this in. Um, you had requested some additional information and outreach to developers. And so one of the things I wanted to bring up is that we didn't talk about last time. Is that the ordinance is optional. So this is just an option for people who would like to use this type of streamline streamline process. And in addition to them electing to go through this ordinance process, they also have to meet the eligible projects criteria. That's on page seven. Um, so that looks at location and affordability. Uh, so these are primarily focused on housing. Projects that are similar to the Siski Crossroads projects that has a mixtures of income level units. And so this doesn't necessarily go for just supportive housing that the Siski Crossroads applies for. Uh, but this is mainly for uh moderate income housing units and lower income housing units and.
We're talking about units two or more. Unnecessarily.
Of five or more. Five or more. Yeah. So the definition of multi-housing for this government code section, as well as the ordinance is five or more could apply um for this um streamlined process. And so again, uh, the rates are if they do uh moderate income, they have to provide at least ten percent of the units for moderate income. And for lower income, uh, they would have to apply for twenty percent. It's an either or. They don't have to do both if they so choose. Um, the other units may be of market rate. So one of the reasons why this ordinance is in place. So this actually, the government code section went into effect in two thousand eighteen. And so this is actually already offered for multi-housing developers who'd like to use it, but. Adopting a local ordinance uh helps clarify the standards that the city itself would like to apply for urban design. And so I provided some more information on urban design, um, why it's important to do urban design. Um, it does really help address how people perceive and use their environment, and it can be one of the most important pieces of a community is how it looks, it feels. And looks at livability pieces for that. So when we go through the ordinance itself, those livability features are like the recreation pieces. Uh, that are onsite for the developments themselves. And it's just a really effective tool to make sure that if these uh developments do choose to come in and use this, that they're being done to a standard and. Design that the community would like to see. So moving through. Uh, one of the other pieces was fiscal impact of the ordinance. And so we did go through and do a fiscal impact beginning on the bottom of page nine. Um, so you had requested that we look at what are the cost savings or costly pieces of the ordinance. Um, I will get into the developer review in a little bit. But the majority of the cost savings are related to what we call soft costs of development, which represent about twenty to thirty percent of the total project. Um, and these are architectural engineering services permitting fees, finance, financing costs, zoning review and environmental review. Affordable and mixed income housing projects often have higher soft costs due to the complexity of their financing and specialized consultants to assemble funding packages. Time is also a huge factor, and we heard that at our last planning commission meeting and throughout the housing element uh formation is that time is a huge factor for any development, not just housing. And so the longer and more complex the review processes for any housing development, it adds to the cost of a project. And so I broke down uh two of the typical costs that would be required for multi-unit housing, which is the discretionary approval through a conditional use permit process. Which is running an average of eighteen thousand dollars, which takes about six months to accomplish on average. And then the environmental review, um, I'm assuming a smaller project, which is an initial study and mitigated negative deck under the California Environmental Quality Act. Which the ISM and Ds are running about thirty-two thousand dollars on average and take about eight months on average to complete, which is including all the biological studies and traffic studies. The other piece of this is so a development like Siski Crossroads um with environmental review, because it's uh fifty units would actually most likely need an environmental impact report under SEQA. And that's ranging from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on on range of costs. And that can take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months to complete. So on the low ball and uh total cost savings by implementing the streamlined permitting process for these types of developments would be about fifty thousand dollars in fourteen months in cost and time savings. Cause they would not have to do environmental review or the conditional use permit under the streamlined permit piece.
Estimate costs under conditionally use permit. If you took a, say a five unit project, that was into a property that is properly zoned. Is there any savings? Cause there's no review, right?
If they do the streamlined, yes.
So there would be, and then, so potentially unless you're doing a project that's outside the zoning, then there's potential savings. But if you're gonna. Do a project meets current zoning regulations, this cost is not an actual cost.
It is actually. So we talked about this in the housing element review process.
Can I just add one more before? Go back. So sorry about soft costs for us. So the hard cost based on all the elements in the proposed. Zoning. Did you add up what those additional hard costs would be?
We did request the developers that we interviewed to look at that and give their opinion on if it would be, you know, price them out of that. But going back to the original question, so regardless of zoning right now, our multi-unit housing requires conditional use permits for three units or higher. So even though it allows for twelve to sixteen unit per acre, it requires a conditional use permit for units higher than three units. And so that was identified as a constraint in our housing element. Because basically we don't allow multi-unit housing because it all requires a conditional use permit unless it's a triplex or lower on the proper zone. And so uh even if you weren't to do the streamline, you would have to go through that conditional use permit process. Would, yeah. The other piece of that too is that going through a discretionary process, which is the conditional use permit process as well as the SEQA piece. Could add to the risk of litigation and could actually decrease the amount of assurances that developers with mixed unit developments have. So one of the issues is. The funding is so complex, having to balance grants, having to balance loans, having to balance the different pieces of capital needed to do larger scale developments, even five units or higher. Um, those assurances help the developer make that decision better. A lot of developers ask that. So they go, you know, what is the possibility of getting a denial? And I can never give them an answer because I cannot speak for the commission. Um, and I basically said, you know, it's really up to the commission. I cannot give you a percentage. And a lot of developers, when they're putting in money to do a mixed unit or a mixed or a mixed income unit. Um, development don't want to deal with that uncertainty. And so this process would also increase the certainty for them. It would also reduce the li- risk of litigation that surrounds discretionary and environmental review. Which right now litigation costs are ranging anywhere from nineteen thousand dollars to sixty-six thousand dollars in Siski County Superior Court for the payout costs. Um, and that does not include uh attorneys fees for trial preparation. And so that amount of time in litigation right now can take anywhere from four months to two years. Um, there is a project that's being litigated under SEQA that I'm familiar with that's been in the process for over two years. Um, they were sued at the beginning of COVID and they were supposed to have a court date this month, but it's been pushed back to next month. So there's a lot of uncertainty.
Four flex, you'd still have to go through a lot of that. So a triplex that's a co-op then.
I'm not sure why our code did that. Um, again, that's why we highlighted it as a constraint in the housing element that we will have to resolve with the zoning code update. And we can do that. We can relieve some of those barriers for other people who don't want to do mixed income units. Um, and that'll be part of our general plan and zoning code update process. Again, if you would like to, if you want to keep it, that is up to your your purview as the commission and the city councils purview. Um, my understanding uh based on our housing uh conversations is that both the planning commission and the city council did confirm that they are pro growth and would like to see more housing units. And so one of the ways of doing that is removing some of these governmental barriers that would require the discretionary approval. So overall, um, on a very low conservative estimate cost and time, uh, if you used this streamlined process and we put this into effect. Um, you could be reduced, you're reducing your project around fifty thousand dollars, um, assuming it's not litigated. Um, which again, litigation is significantly reduced with no discretionary approval and it shortens your timelines over a year. And so that's one of the things that, you know, in my experience, working with developers who are doing larger scale projects, whether they be commercial or housing. Uh, residential, uh, time, time is one of the most precious things for them. Um, so a lot of our site plan applicants right now, it's how much time is this gonna take? It's really not a factor of of money in that circumstance. So um environmental review, this is a general rule exemption and for SEQA, which we reviewed last time. So review by public and outside agencies. Um, we did hold that public hearing on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, not that we could, we will also accept public comment tonight on the ordinance proposed. Um, to comply with government code section sixty-five eighty-five four. Um, you had requested at that meeting that we contact housing developers that would most likely utilize this ordinance to gather their input on the proposed changes. Um, again, because of the financing piece for mixed income housing, a lot of the local developments that we've seen thus far. Those types of developers would most likely not use this streamlining ordinance, although we would walk them through it if they would be interested in that. Um, that's one of the features in the housing element that we had put down um in a recommendation we had got is doing quarterly developer meetings. To be able to walk them through new regulations and opportunities for them if they wanted to kind of step up their development game. So. We have, you know, individual developers who will do maybe one to three houses in their lifetime, you know, it's just something that they like to do. Where then you have kind of that middle tier that we talked about at the last meeting who are doing, you know, anywhere from five to forty houses or developments within their lifetime. And then you have what we call master developers who have the experience with the housing finance tools and the housing regulations that they can do fifty plus unit developments. Um, every couple of years. And so this streamlined ordinance is kind of more geared towards the master developer, but we could definitely go to the mid-tier developer to help them utilize this as well. Um, and help them look at different funding mechanisms. So I sent it to the rural communities housing development, which is the firm doing the Siski Crossroads that has expressed interest in doing another multi-unit and mixed income. Um, housing development in the area Danko Builders, which is a well-known uh mixed income, multi-unit housing developer. They're trying to work on a project in Mount Shasta right now, which would have, which may be twenty-one to twenty-four units. Um, they haven't submitted their application yet, so it's not set in stone. How many are they're gonna do there? Um, but they're um very successful on the coast. Um, housing tools, which is now an on-call uh planning consultant who acts as an intermediary for developers and cities. And so we have them on contract now. To assist us with these types of evaluations to make sure we're not outpricing our developers. Um, and then I did send it over to Plan West who are doing the housing element, who also have experience working as intermediaries between cities and developers. Um, those are the firms that are kind of in the area right now and understand our building market because they are building right now. Um, or building in similar markets in Humboldt and Del Norte. Uh, for example, housing tools is working quite a bit with Del Norte County on a number of affordable housing projects that the city is sponsoring. Um, and so they have some really good insight on a couple of different, um, they're working in Tahima County too. I think we talked to them about today. Um, so a lot of really good experience in more remote uh rural areas to give us that input. Um, all of the reviewers stated that the ordinance looked very reasonable from their experience and did not pose any cost concerns. Now again. I, we talked about a few elements at the last meeting. And so what I did was I went through the ordinance and I annotated certain areas that we already require in the site plan review. Um, for different developments. And then there are pieces that we can play with. So I think the chain link fence was brought up last time. If you would like to allow that for these types of uh developments, we can easily amend the ordinance to allow that. My recommendation would be if we do allow for chain link fence that they be black or green in color to kind of blend more with the landscape, but that is just a suggestion or recommendation. And it's really up to you guys and your discussion how you'd like to do that. Um, so I don't know if you'd like to talk about your attendance at the R E R C and then your input or your experience with what the council is looking for. Um, this is city manager, Jason Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Uh, Mr. Devlin, I don't think we've met formally, so nice to meet you. Uh, my name is Jason Ledbetter. I'm the city manager for the city of Wairika. So. I wanted to come support this particular uh document here tonight because it does fit into the direction that city council has given us, not only for the original document before. Uh, Juliana Lucchese was here with Liz, but um also when we look at the landscape. Of what's transpired here in the city of Wairika, we have a lot of projects, we have a project list, but we have real, really no direction. So my job is to try to create a strategic plan. And that's what we'll be working on when we sit a new council after this election. And so when I personally look at the strategic plan, I look at four main areas that uh we really need to support here over the next couple decades. The first one being revenue. We're running a budget deficit that can't sustain. We're bargaining right now with the Police Officers Association. Obviously through this cost of living increase, we should anticipate that they would receive a COLA. Uh, and so we're going to be adding more costs into our budget, uh, just through that process of bargaining. And so we're gonna have to rectify revenue issues, which um I'll be quite frank with you, uh, city councils would prefer not to entertain revenue because it is a difficult subject. Uh, so we'll develop a strategic plan all around revenue. We'll develop a strategic plan all around uh water scarcity, and we're already working very hard. We're adding seven hundred thousand gallons of storage. We're re-drilling the Davis well behind Y P D. We're looking at, we're having pace engineering currently. They're going to um. Design an emergency water filtration unit for uh Greenhorn Reservoir because we do have water rights there, but we haven't pulled off of them since. We moved to Fall Creek. And there's just a litany of money and projects to make us as secure as possible on our water that we're looking at. And obviously the next one is fire danger. And really hazard mitigation planning. So we've been working with the Wairika Fire Safe Council already, and we're gonna be applying for grants uh. For community resilience coordinator position that would then seek more funding to do mastication projects. Uh, luckily, we have Jay Perkins at Wairika Fire Safe Council who's already. Done the G I S work on a very large project, Butcher Hill, Outson Road, Deer Creek, where we would be basically masticating on private and public property with uh state and federal funding. And then the fourth one that I think is a huge priority and has become a priority for city council is housing, and we can break that into two different sections. Regular housing, which we're talking about here kind of right now, and then also the unhoused issue. And so we're working with Dr. Sarah Kalar on a number of um. Possible solutions uh to the unhoused issue. But if you caught the, if you caught the uh city council meeting um a month ago, it was posed to city council on what they wanted to do as far as growth was concerned. And the consensus across the board was ten thousand. They wanted to grow to ten thousand people. Some wanted to grow more. Technically, we can't grow. I think more than ten thousand at this point, based off of uh sewer. Uh, maybe it's a little bit more than that. That's the limiting factor. Water, we can grow to a population of fourteen thousand.
How many years are, do they project to get to ten thousand?
We have no real true projection and that just was kind of giving us direction on. Because the plan changes, we don't have to grow. We can certainly try to stay the same and retract. And then internally that would change what grants we were going for, how we would, how we would engage that process. How we would engage that process. Um, you know, and Juliana and I talked about that. If that was the case, if they didn't want to grow, we were looking at turning more into an agricultural city and maybe having orchards in the city or maybe having. Co-op community gardens where we were trying to maximize our own food supply. To be able to provide food to restaurants and uh even Rayleigh's or grocery outlet. Um. But they do, they have a high interest in standing up a project that fits within uh this document that you have here. So there's this thing out right now with uh H C D. It's called a supernova, which just means a lot more money than normal. And so they are subsidizing these projects for moderate to lower income. And depending on where you are in that range, they'll pay anywhere from fifty percent to all the way a hundred percent of your project. And so we want to maximize that and we are, you know, have a consultant on board that we'll be working with. And eventually we will bring that forward to city council to basically drive our own housing development, but with no financial risk to us because. We are basically requesting on an R F P or request for qualifications. A developer that wants to come and do this project, and then we either apply for the grant. And get the grant and that grant is passed directly to the developer. And then they follow our guidelines on what city council would like that development to be. You guys will have a huge say in that because. Your planning director will be showing showcasing you what types of, what that development looks like. It doesn't look like Cabrini-Green projects, you know. There are different uh possibilities for development with more cottage style spread out. Um, housing that could fit for our. Our folks that are maybe empty nesters or widows that need to transition from a two thousand square foot home into more of an ADA compliant one-story home thereby. And I think Juliana has pointed this out, opening, opening up the housing stock here so that. That person that, you know, just got the promotion, has three kids and now can afford the bigger and needs the bigger house. They move into that. Uh, into that setup. But we also have a local developer here who bought a large swath of land and. Has been entertaining a project very similar to this. He is highly interested. He's got multiple partners in funding backing. And one of his partners would be kind of the competitor of the people that did crossroads. So they're very aware of how to get this grant money. But I think that. As a local developer, he's highly interested in subsidizing this project with this money, but I think that, and I have not discussed this with him, so I'm putting words in his mouth, but. I think that this uh document would actually be to his benefit because when we look at crossroads. We're talking about, you know, eighteen month E I R process that now is gone, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's not needed anymore if this document is passed here. And so when I look at this document, I certainly support it, but I certainly understand the authority of this commission to have a uh constructive conversation. So we can get to a document that we all agree on. And that's kind of why I'm here tonight is to hopefully drive that conversation or support. Uh, in my opinion, the city's perspective, but. You know, it's very specific. It's for future affordable multi-family development projects. So that in and of itself kind of removes people that are developing here locally for their own house. Or they're developing a specific building that's not gonna suit this need. It's obviously required by the state of California. Um, and developers, the beauty of this too is that if, you know. Once we get to the finish line on this, if someone's unsatisfied with this, they don't have to go this route. They can opt out and just do the old school route. But it protects and it actually incentivizes, in my opinion, development because this is how. We're lucky with the supernova. That's very uncommon, but the state, the federal government as well has recognized. You know, the state of California needs two and a half million units is what they came out with their arena numbers uh altold. And so. This help, this basically incentivizes if a developer locally or a developer out of town sees this document, they know. They find the right zoning, they're going to save, and I agree with Juliana, time is far more precious than money. They're going to save time. There's a possibility of saving money, especially on the environmental review side of it. Uh, but they're not going to have, uh, they're not going to be contested or litigated against, which is huge because that's our incentive. And so with the supernova, we have the ability to stand things up. But if you remove the supernova, this is how you incentivize things. I mean, this is all we can do in some, in some instances, say ten years ago, is to create a document like this. Thereby drawing people in. And so I'm just here tonight to kind of hear your guys' perspective and hopefully um. You know, if you have more feedback that we can get, then we can work on that. Uh, but also too. Productivity is very important to me. And so, you know, and last night, I think was a prime example of that at city council. We had proposed increasing fees on on certain items that fall right under the planning director. Um, and we had a meeting. And then they wanted a workshop. We had a workshop and then we had another meeting and we had some people that wanted to continue to kind of kick that project down the road because they did not want to come to a conclusion. And that is fine. But it's, it's better to just tell us straight up, I just don't, I just will not vote yes on this rather than maybe. Have us go in circles, try to get that information for you and then still. That's just wasting everybody's time in my personal opinion. It's just, we can comply with whatever your desires are. That is what your authority is as a commission. And that's what we want. We don't want to take this to city council and have you guys disagree with it because we want city council, planning commission and staff to be moving in the same direction. And that is uh. That's a big ask, but that is my goal. So. I'm just kind of here tonight to give my perspective and then hear your feedback and then work with Juliana to hopefully get us to the finish line. So.
Is this local developer that sort of is looking at a huge project? Has he ever done large projects?
No, but his um, his two, two business partners have, yeah, you guys know who it is.
Yeah, yeah. So in addition to that, I know we talked about this at the housing element, but I wanted to follow up with this too. So this is only one portion of the discussion, obviously. You know, we talk about other aspects, um, you know, streamlining zoning, um, going through and making this as easy as possible to do housing development. So one of the other things that this partners with really well. Um, is we are moving forward with making a much more. So one of the other things that this partners with really well is we are moving forward with making a much more robust vacant housing inventory. And site readiness analysis. So we're going to, we're spending additional dollars on housing tools to take the vacant lot inventory that E Cor did. That was very high level. It didn't provide a lot of specific detail. And then we are going to be preparing basically either a website or a litany of options that are site ready for development. And so having this in place at the time of that being published to say, yes, this lot is eligible for S B thirty-five streamlining. That helps with our site readiness. So basically, the idea is to take some of our prime property that has utilities. That are able to start development quickly and advertise those to any developer who would like to do that. And so we have a number of city-owned properties that could satisfy that need. And so that will be part of the site readiness and housing inventory that we would publish to all developers. And so, you know, again, this is a small portion of the, of the process that we're going through to improve the housing conditions.
Did we get an accurate update map of that property?
Yeah, it will come to you for review once we get a couple more pieces on it. So we did approve that they move forward with some of the more in-depth analysis. So you'll have information on prime properties and, you know, or properties that may have had previous environmental issues. That may need some brownfield remediation. That has happened with a couple of vacant properties that the city council. Has wanted to purchase and has purchased, which that's kind of an issue. That doesn't make it site-ready if we have to do soil cleanup, but we do have grants for that. So you will get a chance to look at that when we get that done. So we'll hopefully have that done in the next couple of months, adding to that piece.
And that, that document not only supports incentivizing, you know, and being able to advertise for developers. But it also falls into the project that the city council would like to see us take on, which is basically doing the supernova. And standing up housing as the conduit directly to a developer.
The other piece too is Jason has shared with me, he attended a two-day workshop. Right now, we have some technical assistance from the Siskiyou Economic Development Council on creating a recreation economy for rural communities, which is an E P A program. The workshop basically had different agencies, federal and state attend, as well as individuals from the community and the county. And one of the pieces of feedbacks, and that will be a final recommendation in that report, is they really want to see the creation of a really consistent. Wairika design and branding standards for the city to differentiate itself from the other small cities and urban design is part of that. So this is a small piece of that puzzle. And again, that's why our next meeting will be at the community center for planning commissions regularly scheduled. So that we can spend some time doing a workshop on urban design and what, what that looks like and what you'd like to recommend to city council. In terms of urban design and branding pieces. The other additional piece that they brought up at those community meetings is, is housing. Having housing for workers who would support a recreation economy, housing for workers right now. And so housing and the design piece, you know, kind of are co-mingled in, in the current ordinance that we have now. That before you, for consideration. And so it is coming up more in conversations of having this design standard. And it will probably be something that we see moving forward that we would apply also to commercial development. Again, you know, having that design piece really makes your city much more cohesive. And especially depending on the, the avenue the planning commission wants to take, we can either have neighborhood standards that differentiate neighborhoods. Or you can give them, you know, four different types of urban design to do, but that's something we'll explore at the next meeting. And that's something that we can then take and even come back to this ordinance and refine even more. And say, this is the type of design that we would like to see for the area and give some more options. But for the most part, we kept it fairly broad in terms of the recommendation and really relied on what's required now. For most of the pieces. So I did go through and annotate and the annotations start on page twenty-two of your packets. Just to kind of, you know, give a reason why we were recommending certain pieces of it. Cause I know we talked about the length of dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs and why we're recommending three hundred feet. And, and kind of putting some of the data and best practices in planning that are, are moving forward. And again, those pieces can be amended. Some of the pieces to kind of highlight though.
Is there anything else now is three hundred feet or is it larger than that?
Uh, I have to double check. I believe it is larger than that. And so we would recommend going through the design standards as a whole. I think it's four hundred now. Yeah. I would have to take a look now, but three hundred is kind of a standard recommended not only by planners. But also from fire professionals and fire specialists, especially in our type of community that is fire prone. And again, it's not that you cannot have that at three hundred feet, but you need to, if it's past three hundred feet, you need that kind of connection that we talked about for bike ped. That's wide enough to accommodate cars. So what we would do is place a bollard at the end of it. If we do need to have a quick emergency evacuation, the police department or public works would come out. They'd pull the lock off and people would be allowed to use that as a secondary access for that area. So you can have a cul-de-sac longer than three hundred, but it's, it's requiring that it have that connection piece. That would be used for pedestrians, cyclists, and that could be used as emergency access.
We increased it for the one we put in by the cemetery. Dave Simmons put in up there. It was just three hundred feet and they needed it. I think that's why.
Yeah, I think it's like four, four fifty or something like that.
It's Mount Shasta had the four hundred and a couple of cities.
Yeah, and, and that, I actually, while I was there, I reduced it for them as well, for the new fire recommendations. Again, you know, that's why, you know, we were a different community under different circumstances where we weren't as wildfire prone. Yes, cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, I would be more comfortable with saying, yes, they can be longer without that additional connection. But it's just keeping that fire prone safety piece into consideration when we're making that recommendation.
At that time, they wanted the larger for the turnaround area at the top for fire trucks. So to get turned around, that was really an option.
Yes, yeah, they did. And actually, they had just put in a secondary access for their community right before the fire hit. And actually, it did help a lot with emergency evacuations. And they found that that was one of the primary factors for a lot of people being able to get out safely, was that additional secondary access. But again, you know, we understand that some of these developments are going to be case by case. And so if this does not work for someone, there are avenues that we can bring it to planning commission for special consideration as well as city council. And so I don't want this to seem like it is a hard and fast rule. We do want to try and be as flexible as possible as we move forward. And so we tried to do that as much as possible, but also communicating that, you know, there are certain things the community values. Or there are certain things we do need to keep in perspective. So like the bicycle parking requirement. That's actually a very common one in these objective design standards. Because if we are accommodating low-income individuals, they are less likely to have vehicles and more likely to have other modes of transportation. And so accommodating those types of people with secure storage for their bicycle parking, whether it be in the unit itself. Or in a shared parking area, it can even just be a covered bike rack that has a security camera on it. And that would meet the needs of this ordinance. So those are why we kind of made those recommendations. So the same thing too. So parking lot location and access items A, B, and C are all current requirements. That we apply during the site plan application process.
I think you have a question from Commissioner Devlin.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I assume, Richard, that you had time to read your pack.
Okay.
I've read my packet.
Okay.
So while it's nice to have you go through the notes again.
We can just open it for questions.
Yeah, well, so I, I still have some questions. I appreciate Jason, your, your invite and kind of looking at what the city wants to do. I can see on those bigger projects with grant money and bigger developers where this is, this is nice for those guys. But I don't want to lose maybe a smaller developer that's going to come in and do a five-week project. But can't do it now because some of the elements of this just can't be done at that scale. Or just, it's not economical to do. I went through, I have about ten or eleven items. I would like to discuss just, I think, for me, we could just go to them. Maybe you could address them.
No, it's perfect. Oh, perfect.
So I just, I just broke it down by item number, starting at, starting at one A. And street, street connectivity, you know, new streets to form a continuous length, particular cycling and pedestrian doors. So one of my, I think one of my biggest problems with how this has been put together. Is our pedestrian bicycle requirement. And trying to think of cul-de-sacs in the area. I guess if you're doing a new project that's huge and you're putting in a new cul-de-sac. And you want to put that pedestrian vehicle through, I guess that works, but it doesn't work on maybe a smaller. Project where there we can not be that access to going through. I, I would suggest moving, I mean, moving access, but removing cycling from it. This down farther in the document yet.
So you're saying if you had a cul-de-sac, you're gonna have eight houses in the cul-de-sac, you have to put a fourteen-foot wide side.
I mean, I came from the city of Murrieta where we had beautiful cul-de-sacs that were probably three hundred feet long. We had six, six properties on there all at Baker. We didn't have escape routes at the end of every cul-de-sac. But that project could have, in the scheme of things, provided it. But I'm looking at, I know you're talking about bigger, bigger projects here, but the reality is. At some point, there's going to be some builder here in town that's going to put their own money into it and build something that makes economic sense. But they have to go in and put in a new road. Now we're thirty feet, you know, cul-de-sac. Now you want another road out at the end of the cul-de-sac and you want offset or, you know. Bike pedestrian ways are fourteen feet wide. Now we're talking about an area that's seventy-five feet wide.
So this would not.
Minimum basis.
Yeah, I, I think the correction is, is it wouldn't be fourteen feet wide on the right-of-way. So we would still stay with the right-of-way standards that we have now, which is, I believe, there's special consideration for thirty-six inches. If there's a extenuating circumstance, but for the most part, we go for a four-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk. So those would apply to the right-of-way. What this is saying is that at the end of that cul-de-sac at some point. Providing that fourteen-foot connector to another street.
And I can see that.
Yeah. Yes, so the three hundred would be the minimum in the proposed as it is, but if you want to raise it to. Yes. So for example, if you wanted to raise it to four hundred, you could do that.
So how wide the exit?
No, it's the fourteen-foot cycling pedestrian. So fourteen feet is what we would consider is enough for vehicles to leave an area. Obviously, it is not wide enough for two-way traffic, but they're not meant for that. So fourteen feet, I think the lowest I've seen it go down is twelve foot eight inches for a vehicle. Because you're assuming that people also have trailers at the back and so those tend to possibly be wider. So we could reduce the fourteen-foot wide path to, I would say the lowest I would recommend is twelve.
I, I think after. Understanding, I'm also talking about my original objection to having the escape land. Now probably doesn't fit most smaller projects. Take a, taking bigger, three-quarters, whatever's legally buildable, built by units. Probably not going to. Industry street or escape, escape land, but.
You, you think we're talking about three separate things?
I think, yeah, I see a small project.
You have small, midsize and master, and this is kind of more on the larger scale. But again, you know, going back to the housing element that we talked about and that we have moving forward. We tried to make sure that as we move forward, it's not just this ordinance. We're going to be fixing all of the ordinances. This is a tiny piece of the puzzle.
This, you know, we're trying to be objective. And then again, the vision, there's a piece in there that says, well, if you go to the objective standards, it rests us out the window. So if we have stuff at the objective standards that might find us later on. Some developer at some point, I want to make sure that we are looking at those items ahead of time. So that it's fair, it's big developers versus people here in town. Locally, I would love to see our builders be able to participate.
Yeah. And I think that's super reasonable and that's why, you know, again, this is, so this is optional that they can take this. But we are also working on that zoning code change and some of the other efficiencies that the midsize and smaller would benefit from. That the larger developers would benefit from, from this one as well.
Well, not only we're talking about a large scheme, the, the big scheme. Which you said, Jason said that we, we don't want to be cross purposes with the city council. We all obviously we have to be on, in the green, don't, we can't dispute with the city council.
Well, I think you guys really have the benefit of refining the document before it comes to city council. And I don't think you're not on the same page by any stretch of the imagination. I think also, you know, and I don't know the answer. I kind of leave it up to the folks that have been here locally. I mean, I've been here four and a half years. My wife was born here. So speaking of being grandfathered in Don Marie, I'm grandfathered into the area. But there is one caveat to this whole thing that is just, I would really love to get your guys' perspective. And that is, there's like a clause here in this document and it's based on affordability. And I just, it makes me think that the majority of people doing five units, they're not going to want, they're not even going to be able to utilize this document. Because are they going to maintain a, a lower rental rate for fifty-five years? Are they going to then work to make sure that there's a forty-five-year mortgage that meets the standard for someone at this threshold income? And I don't personally see that. I do see these projects that are, you know, Dusty Veal did a project here. That I think is a fabulous project personally, like the size and the scale and Joan Smith Freeman happens to live in one of those buildings. And I think that is kind of the model. Can we kind of hone that into our project? Maybe those are smaller, but we're looking at making them middle to lower tier, you know, workforce style housing.
But a unit like that, you'd have to put fourteen-foot sidewalks in and so forth.
So if you use the example of that development, that would not apply because the dead ends that are there or the turnarounds are not three hundred feet. So this would not apply to them.
Well, I guess what I'm kind of saying is that this would never have applied to that project. Because Dusty wasn't seeking to service that community of affordability.
Well, and just in the design itself, how, how it was designed, it didn't have the dead ends and cul-de-sac. Basically, if you look at how he did it, he had basically this side road runoff. And then basically you park and then you have these rows of houses that you walk up to. And so that wouldn't apply to this because it didn't have that cul-de-sac dead-end piece.
But I also think I understand maybe more of Commissioner Devlin's perspective here that this document. If I'm reading this correctly, kind of is then referenced as the standard in another document. And then you're kind of like, wait a minute, this was an opt-in and now you're basically making this the rule for everyone else. So maybe that's part of.
Yeah.
You were concerned with one size fits all, which again, doesn't fit.
Or agreeing to something now that may be an issue later. So I think the big thing with that is as we go through the general plan, the zoning code update. You know, we need to finish an ordinance recommendation sooner than that because this is linked to grant dollars. And so that's why I've been kind of bringing this back before we get done with urban design pieces. Cause I need to, you know, close out the grant. But as we go through that process, we can come back and amend this. You know, this, this can be adjusted.
So I guess the first three there, I'll go back to that bicycle piece. And then third one.
The one D?
Or I think two C, bicycling, bike parking. So, I mean, I, I understand that. A big project, right? But this, how we have it written is not objective. It doesn't, it doesn't define what that is, right? If I'm a developer and draw this plan up and I say I'm going to have, you know, a rail over here that'll accommodate three bikes. I don't want to come into city and the city says, no, you know, design objective, we want you to have that lighted, covered, secure. It's got to be so many square feet. It's got to be this far from the building it can. So there's nothing, it's a, it's a nice idea. But it's not, there's no objective design. There's nothing I could reference right now, draw, give that to you. This is going to be something that somebody would have to administer.
Yeah, that, that wasn't the feedback we got from the developers, but I can understand where that comes from. Do you think that's because we don't have a good definition subset of our zoning code to clarify or?
You know, bike security or, you know, I put a rail out there to secure bikes too.
Yeah, it would basically need to be lit and covered, like, like you had said. So it could be near a vestibule is what I've typically seen them. Yeah, it would basically need to be lit and covered, like, like you had said. So, uh, it could be near a vestibule is what I've typically seen them with projects like this. So for the Siski Crossroads, for example, um, they have some covered parking, and what they did is at the end of their covered parking, they have a covered bike parking area. That's basically, um, they're P-shaped, um, and so they have that under there, and so it's already lit, because it's for the cars as well. And so they just added those P-shapes. And then took the awning and extended it a couple of feet out. And so that would qualify. Um, but I can see your point. So what we, you know, one, we can take it out. It's not required in this, um, although I would suggest it, just because, like I said, low-income individuals are more likely to have a bike. But, you know, the other thing we can do is. We can give examples of it, and we can have a, a design guidebook that can go with it as like examples of that. That could be an assistive, like, implementation tool. Um, the other thing to note is now with new developments, uh, we do a free initial consultation, so a pre-application meeting, where they can bring their concept. And they get every single one of the department heads to sit with them for an hour. Um, and we go over their concept plan and go, here's what we see here, here's an issue we may see. Um, this needs to be adjusted like this. Um, most of that is for the MS four piece to have that conversation. Um, but we've been finding that's been really helpful for, you know. Applying the site plan regulations. So we would bring that up in the consultation. But you can take it out if you want.
I would like there to be a census on that. Thinking that we have to direct.
This on two C?
Yes.
Bike parking. Development, um, housing that they want to attract. I think low income, I think would probably be.
Low-income housing, I agree with you on that. You suggested to him, or is it required?
Yeah, we can change it to, um, to be a suggestive and not a requirement.
Three A, uh, was parking location and access, um. So parking areas shall not exceed twenty percent of the street frontage. How is that calculated now? Understand what that.
Sure, actually, that is in reference to some feedback we've been getting through the general plan. So there is a apartment on. So basically what this does, it, it reduces them from putting all of the parking on the public right-of-way. So there's a huge parking expanse between the sidewalk and the building itself. Um, and that has come up as an issue with some of our housing that we have now, and the biggest offender, you can go find that one. Oh, is on Lane Street. It is the five oh nine Lane Street. There's a big apartment complex there, and I can get the name of it. Yeah, and so it's.
But can you, yeah, just explain that twenty percent, what that looks like in Layman's.
Uh, Governor's Plaza, that's what it's called. I think it's such an interesting thing when they give them really fancy names. Um, so basically what that does is it requires. Some of the parking to either be on the side of the lot or in the back of the lot. So the pro, all of the parking cannot be front-loaded onto the street frontage. And so that just creates a much nicer, what we call human-scale experience. So instead of having, you know, I can, you know, it's on my computer. But instead of having this expansive area, it's.
And that, we run in, yeah, we run into that problem outside of this, but like on Highway three, like we're doing this huge improvement, right? And who's gonna walk down Highway three and utilize like ped, you know, or bicycle? When there's all this parking on the front side, it makes it, um, not an attractive walk, because you're not walking right up to the door front, like minor is much more attractive.
You'd like to word it, word it maybe a little bit differently?
I had no idea with twenty percent. So twenty percent of the total parking that is required can be in the front. The rest has to be.
In the back, yeah.
So I think if that was clarified.
Yeah, so what we can do, so yeah, uh, twenty percent of the street frontage, uh, can, yeah, so what it really is saying, you cannot exceed twenty percent of yours. So if you have a hundred feet, you can't, you can only go twenty feet in the front. So yeah, I can definitely put in language to clarify that better.
Also, you're, so it's not a total percentage of total parking?
No.
Percentage, so if you have a hundred foot straight, you can put in.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Yes, in the front. Yeah. And then the rest will have to go on the edge or the back.
Off the sides?
Or the sides, yes, thank you.
Okay.
That's what I meant by edge, I'm sorry.
Uh, three B, this one, so the entrances and access parking lots and other facilities shall be provided at locations. Approved by the city engineer or the planning director. Um, to me, that is not objective at all. The experience of sitting down with our city engineer, things change and change and change. Um, if I'm gonna submit a plan, I think we should be able to have a business department required for interest exit areas. If it's submitted to you, it's objective, but I don't want them that to have me decide.
And that, that's a great point, Commissioner Devlin, because ultimately, that's what you want this document to do, is to answer the questions beforehand. Yeah, and so I don't know how they could rectify that, but.
It's, it's, yeah, we can, it's, it's just removing the uncertainty. You're, yeah, because there's a, there's a variety of answers that could go there, so we can do that. Oh, no, you're okay. Three G.
Three G, uh, this is one, I had to look up different diagrams on the internet, try to figure out how this actually works. But a separation of the pedestrian and cycling traffic from the automobile traffic path, uh, required to minimize conflict areas for safety. So, I don't believe we have a project in this town that has a separating bike path, walking path. At all.
Actually, all of our commercial developments are required to do this. And so basically what this means is, so Walmart doesn't have it, because they were an older building style. But it's actually now required in the building code. Um, so basically what it means is when you get out of your vehicle, there has to be like a, a sidewalk here. So like City Hall here has this sidewalk between the two parking lots, and that would qualify. So you, so, and then basically if a pedestrian has to go over, if this is mainly for pedestrians. Um, but if a pedestrian has to go over a driving area where there's shared space with a car, it has to be a marked crosswalk. And it has to go directly to the ingress egress of the building.
Back to your fourteen-foot wide.
No. No, that would be the four-foot minimum.
Okay, so then. City required curbs and gutters and sidewalks and street lines. Right now, respect that five feet.
Okay, yes. The four feet comes in in some of the areas in town that has like a sidewalk exemption. They have like a weird mini-code section that only has.
I'm just wondering where in the project this happens.
So this happens onsite with the parking lot construction.
Can you just explain what that looks like, I guess?
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure, so, in a park, so you're gonna have to provide. Bike paths through the parking lot?
Is that a sidewalk?
Yeah, it's a sidewalk. So pedestrians and cyclists use the same sidewalk. Or onsite. And so basically what this is saying is, so like this property has a sidewalk that connects the right-of-way to the building. And is kind of the edge of the parking lot as well.
Which is a pedestrian sidewalk.
Uh, when they come onsite, they can use the sidewalks for an onsite private property if they're going to the building itself. And that's basically just what it is, is, uh, it's a dedicated safe route from the right-of-way to the development itself, where they're not sharing it with a vehicle.
There noted that the bicycles can be on.
But I'm, I'm sorry, back to Commissioner Devlin, just because as we go through these, I mean, as we are kind of coming to a compromise, it seems like. Are you satisfied with that last one? Or, I mean, are you?
I feel like most of it is the cycling portion, and I think that's more of a, a language that we use now, where pedestrians and cyclists onsite. Will be using those paths to get there. Um, so for example, if you're cycling to your house, um, you know, you can use the pathway on your property to get to your garage. For example, and that's kind of the equivalent of what this is. So this isn't the right-of-way, it's not the street right-of-way, it's once they get on to the property.
So, we're not, we're not taking, so if we have a five-foot sidewalk that is going to the building from the side. To the building, that meets both definitions. So I'll go back to the fourteen-foot wide.
No.
Like pedestrian. Concrete suspense.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so kinda going back to that Governor's Plaza example, if you look at that property, they don't have that. And so what, if this were to be developed at this time. Either on the edge of the property, um, or a center kind of boulevard, however they wanna do that configuration with their parking, they would have to have a completely separated. Sidewalk for people to get from the street right-of-way to their building.
You know, I see that, I feel like down in the desert, when I was living down there, like at Target, you know, and as a.
Newer.
Yes, at a newer location, where so as a parent of an eight-year-old, and at that point, like three-year-old, it's, you park and immediately walk over to that location. Because it's a sidewalk in the middle of the parking lot, leading you directly into the entrance of the building.
And it doesn't even necessarily need to be a sidewalk, because if I remember correctly, Walmart does have some of these, and what they just did is they separated it in certain areas with landscaping.
And all the new targets have it.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a new requirement in the building code that you have a pedestrian ingress egress from right-of-ways to the building itself.
And I mean, I look in town and I think to myself, because you know, I'll take my son to Rayleigh's, and it's like, it's a wild, it's a wild west, right? It's just cars, I mean, and then they're just driving right through parking spot.
Yeah, so right in the, if you, if you get a chance to look, right in the middle of the Walmart parking lot, there is one long sidewalk that's completely separated from the vehicles. And so that would satisfy that requirement.
Get with that, um, four B, the use of bollard-type areas, maximum four feet high pedestrian areas. So, those sidewalks that go from the street to the building. Would require a bollard-type.
No, it's only if they use them.
So this could be a suggested element.
It is a suggested element. So if they do provide lighting for those pedestrian areas, though, this would be the type of lighting we would want them to use.
Certain street lighting, other parking lot lighting, probably adequate.
Yeah.
This does not say suggested.
Yeah, it certainly reads that way. So and are you saying, just for my, I'm sorry to cut you off there, uh, just for my clarification, if, if bollards are there, they need to be luminous.
Yes, it's not requiring you to put the bollards in. But if you choose to do that, this is the design standard we would like you to use.
Some language change on that, if bollards are used.
I'm sorry if this is a little picky.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, I think this is exactly what we want, and this is kinda like when we talk to, you know, city council, and it's like, what's your vision of the future? Sometimes that's a very hard question to answer, and so we want your feedback.
This is, this is the purpose of this group, is you get through the nitty-gritty details, and this is very helpful to me, because again, I am one perspective.
Okay, onto onsite outdoor recreation areas, um, A. There's, for the recrea, I understand we gotta set, set aside part of that development, but how do we get to twenty-five percent?
So it's based on a measurement of the actual, like, um, area, and actually I did write in my note that this is typically required of financing agencies. Especially if they use federal and state funding. And I did actually take a look at our current multifamily developments, and they all meet this requirement. So the Siskiyou Valley Apartments, Cedar Creek Apartments, Shadow Garden Apartments, and Shasta Courtyards, for example, those are just the four that I looked at. Because two are low-income and actually have HUD funding, and two are not. Um, and actually, all four of them meet this standard. And actually, I believe three of the four exceed this standard. And so it's basically measured from the edges of the playground area.
And the setbacks, lot setbacks, and the open area be part of the setback area?
Yes.
I had, I was like, if you lose five feet and fifteen feet and.
None of those, none of the setbacks have changed.
No. But you can, you can do the recreational and landscaping areas within your setbacks. Um, and I tried to give as, as, as many options to meet this. As possible too. So, you know, I, I tried to make sure, because again, we may have, you know, developments that may use this. May be aging communities, so they may be geared more towards our citizens over sixty-five years old, and they may not want a children's playset. But, you know, they can have sensory gardens, patios, swimming pools, they all meet this requirement.
I think the next one is fencing.
Yep.
So, why, can we delete what's in here with fencing and requirements and just use what we already have? Spensing requirements? Where are we rewriting the fencing?
Cause our fencing requirements need to be rewritten. Actually, it's one of the ordinances you'll be revisiting here pretty soon, because our fencing ordinance is not. Um, very specific, and it's actually kind of all over the place, and it's very difficult to interpret. It's very arbitrary.
Yeah, and then you have so many variances ran at that.
Yeah.
We, we use all the fencing guidelines, because.
Yeah.
He's got that.
Yeah. And I did go through and take a look at, so seven B, um, is the wildfire, uh, wildlife-friendly fencing. And that's obviously not required, but I added it, because the feedback I've been getting through the general plan is we kinda wanna keep this agricultural kind of open space type feel. And this would only apply to developments that are bordered by an open space, uh, agricultural or large vacant, uh, parcel area. And if they are adjacent to a vacant parcel area, and that does get developed, they may change the fencing if they so choose. Um, but it kinda just keeps that kind of open rural kind of setting design. Um, and I did take a look at most of our, um, properties. Like our larger-scale vacant properties that are infill, wouldn't even need to do this, because they are bordered mainly by development.
So, I guess, if we didn't have to include it in this document. I included, we are required to put it in there. At some point, does that mean this is gonna carry over with some other?
No, you can, if we go through and do the fencing ordinance and change that, we can change this as well. Um, or vice versa. Um, again, it's just a recommendation for those.
I mean, I'll chime, I'll chime on the, on this, and I'm curious to hear the other commissioners, but, um, you know, I'm not a developer. You know, at all. And so, but that's part of the gig, right, is what is the best thing for the public, not necessarily what is the best thing for the developer? And I, I personally, I'm not a fan of chain-link fencing. I mean, I'm just not, I, I just feel that it does not look, uh, appropriate. All of a sudden, it looks more like, um, the per, the prison, you know, and so I, I think the great, the, if I were to take the perspective of the community. I think that we would see a majority of people agree with that statement, and so that's the difficulty of your job, is to find the balance between. Not only what are the best decisions for a local developer, but what is the best for the community, and what is the best for the city of Waireka? And so I just wanna see if the other commissioners have any feedback on.
Julia, I'm certainly fencing requirement is up for discussion, and that's not been decided.
No, uh, so in terms of like needing clarification and to, uh, improve it, yeah, we, we need to do that. Yeah, and that's a, it's a bit, it's gonna be a big push for that, and so it'll be a little bit, uh, before we get there. Um, so if you wanna take this out, you can. I think the other thing to note is, it doesn't require you to put any fencing, so.
Yeah.
Skills, but I just know that if you're gonna tell me I have to have something, and these are the materials I have to use, I'm gonna push back right away. I would like to, I'm gonna develop my, uh, whatever project to be the most, um.
Cost-effective.
Cost-effective and beneficial and, you know, have the most return on money. And if we're just kinda going, hey, you have to do this way or no other way, I think more of the, it's the way some of the fencing looks around town.
Yeah, looks nice.
No, well, some of it, some of it, they're more, you put the.
So one of the things we focus on, oh, sorry, go.
No, I, I agree, I think with the exception of chain link fencing, which I, I think loose all, but loose like prison. Um, I don't think most developers would object to not putting chain fencing, I may be wrong.
So yeah.
Well, we talked about last meeting, that possibly colored.
That's a nice compromise, I think, with Dev, with, in, at, you know, as you probably know, even chain-link fencing is, the prices. It's outrageous, fencing in general is just ludicrous. Well, are you, uh, okay? Are you okay? Are you guys okay with the color change then? Well, are you uh okay? Are you okay? Are you guys okay with the color change then? Uh, I don't know, okay. Well, there you go, I don't.
I was gonna say the other thing too with with. Uh, urban design, we're looking at aesthetics, and so if we're focusing mainly on objective aesthetics that we want to do. You know, I've worked with developers, not Shasta has a design standard, and so I would work with them to find the most cost effective material as well. And so instead of doing cedar shingling, you can do a cheaper composite that looks like cedar shingling. And uh cedar shingles, and so one of the things we could do is, you know. You know, neutral colors is a pretty broad uh term. I don't think most fencing is outside of the neutral color standpoint unless you want a brightly colored fence, which if you are okay with brightly colored fences, I have no issue.
I have, I was, for example, has no fencing.
Yeah, and you are not required to have fencing.
You can walk onto it.
But.
I'm not gonna vote against the whole ordinance for the. That's. It's an option.
Well, and I mean, just having this conversation is very constructive because I also, uh, you know, I bought a house here in town, it's from the sixties and it's a wooden fence. And oh, my God, it's just falling apart, you know, and so I certainly. Certainly, yeah, yes, I think Julian is probably grading my house out um. But I also, I, you know, the plastic fencing, you can still drive and see the clamathon fire and there's that fence line that's just melted into the ground too, so. I do see a benefit of having a fence that you put it up and it's going to last. Uh, I personally don't like the basic color of that type of fencing, but. I personally am not opposed to saying let's let's do a color, let's do a black or a green or something like that. But uh.
It's up to you.
I don't know how Mr. O'Brien feels about that because it is a consensus here between the three of you.
The other thing too is if you have, you know. Looking at some of the housing that we even have on this road. Having chain link fence in your backyard is less obtrusive aesthetically than having it in the front yard, and so maybe that's something you can consider as well. Is, you know, we could allow chain link fencing for the back portions if they wanted it um and then have a nicer one up front, but. That's just another suggestion, but I can totally take it out if you want to allow it. I would definitely suggest the coloration, though, being black or the forest green, that that's pretty typical.
Put in there, it's got to be consistent, stuff like chain link here and wood here or something.
We do already have that in here, we we actually do have a section um fences and walls shall be compatible in style and material. Um, so we do have that aspect. Unless you want that, some cities will like the eclectic design and there's no judgment in that um, so I think that's. As we continue to flush out the urban design, yes, these will most likely probably change with, you know, what the preferences of the community yourselves, city council. Um, I've worked with cities that, you know, we've talked about this previously. You can go to Solvang and do the Dutch thing and and do that aesthetic, I've worked with community. Yeah, Danish, thank you, um, the Solvang is a very interesting little place. Um, so you can go Solvang, you can go very Walt Disney World, you can go Miami hot pink and whites. You know, I've worked with a number of different designs and it really is just. Based off of the community. And so we can go in any direction that you would like, so after we're done with this, and the other thing too is.
I guess it comes down to, do we actually gain something by having all the fencing, which is part of the ordinance.
It would probably need to be repeated because if we don't have it in this streamlined portion, the people using this wouldn't have to do it. If that makes sense. So ideally, we would have them be the same. If not somewhat similar, um, you would want some caveats for um commercial, that would be different from housing um for fencing from my. Recommendation, but you can put them all the same.
Fencing topic. Done on for months and years.
Fences and chickens, fences and chickens.
So are we adding a line that basically says we can do chain link and they have to be forest green or black, or I mean, is that kind of?
Yeah.
That's a compromise.
I mean, green or white, green, black.
I think you're in consensus.
I mean, I do think that talking through it, I'm actually more of a fan of Commissioner Devlin's perspective. Because if I put a fence up, I want it to last forever, I don't want to come back on a wooden fence and it just is, it gets warped.
You know, use the right type of wood.
So my last uh last item is the whole building design standards. First meeting, I just thought. That based on these design standards, I understand what the look is. You see it when you go to bed, you see it in some of the other towns, but. With the different façades and their different textures, their different elevations and. And everything we have, we're gonna be beautiful buildings. Or they're gonna be expensive buildings. Uh, there it's not. It's it's a step so far ahead of work, half with projects here. I guess it may only be feasible with those giant projects, you have your super builder and grant money and. And whatever, but I don't see a small, small curve builder. Being able to. Build something. Like it's based on all this, ba- ba- based on all that. Design requirements, um, so I guess my question would be, do these have to be? Requirements or could they be suggested elements?
I personally think they would be requirements, I don't know, we'll get Julian's perspective, but. I also think that I don't, when we talk about like the return on investment. I don't think somebody would see value in building five affordable units. And if they did. They're still more than welcome to go through the normal process and not comply with this and and work with the staff to do it. Because I I just like going back to that. It's a fifty five year term on the rent, like making sure, and I just don't see the return on investment on a small, I don't think we have people that want to do those.
We even figured that out, how many units does it take to make this problem?
It depends.
I don't think five cuts, but I I have not looked into that.
It depends on a lot of different factors, so um land cost is going to be a really big one um time. Uh, obviously, if we do this, that'll reduce that portion, but a big one is going to be landholder, um who holds land, how much are they asking for? Um, is going to be a huge factor. Um, you know, and then it's just, then it's dealing with the zoning code and what you can do for density. Um, so again, we're still constrained with densities in the city even with this ordinance. Um, and so we'll have to work with that, so like even to make this work, it's going to have to be the larger properties first. And then as we clean up the zoning code, it makes it much more accessible for smaller scale properties to use this. Um, so again, it's going to have to be partnered with a lot of different things. But I will say with, I did look at the building articulations and yes, there is more in here than what we've done in the past. But it avoids some of our kind of more. I don't want to be unkind, um, but less appealing um. Housing complexes, so there's one on the corner of Evergreen and uh Shasta Ave. Um, that is just in, it basically would prevent something like that where it's just very large expanses of a single burnt orange color. Um, and they're just, I mean. Again, to each their own, everybody has their own aesthetics, but it's a burnt orange roof with burnt orange siding with very small brown windows. And it's just not very aesthetically pleasing, so it kind of adds some of that, I mean, the aesthetic of that building. If you were to apply this type, one, the articulations are already there, building articulations is not going to be difficult to deal with. But just separating the second and first floor with a different facade color or a facade type. Um, will make a huge difference in terms of, like I said, making it more human scale where it's not this monolithic blank wall. Or just kind of this absence of abs- absence of design. Sometimes it's just a color change, and so that's why I did leave that open, that the separation between the two levels, it could just be a color change. It can go from a white to a tan or, you know, whatever people would like to do. Um, right now, we don't have any color requirements for outside of the historic district, so people can do that. Um, and again, you know, it's it's just kind of looking at some of the issues we have with current developments and then. Again, looking at the Siskiyou Crossroads, it meets that. Um, so going back to the developers that did look at it, they had no issue dealing with the the recommendations.
Well, thank you for listening to all of my questions.
No, this is exactly what we want to hear, this is exciting. It's fun.
Prosper, was up there, is the other project still going in next to the nine hundred fifty?
But that is a, well, behind it where we had talked about, they had talked about a pool. That is a location that's government owned by the county and that is a prime location for more housing units that would fit this mold, in my opinion.
Yeah, and the um the housing that is up there already, which I believe is for seniors. Um, that again would also could be eligible for this streamlining because it is controlled income for a majority of those properties. Um, and again, you know, taking a look at that building and the buildings next to the YMCA, they meet these standards already. Um, so it is pretty on par with what they already have. I just don't remember the name off the top of my head, but they're the Shasta, this still ones or not. Everything Shasta named, and so they start to all become one in my brain sometimes. Um, but no, this is really helpful and I've I've even taken some notes on things I've noticed that are similar to your comments. Um, that I can go through and clean up um and make sure these are are much more, you know, understandable and clear.
So. Clean up, come back next month and then.
We do need to take public comment.
Oh, yeah.
That's a thing, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I hate, you know, I enjoy your guys' company, but I told my son I'd be home by seven, so I'm gonna leave here shortly, so. I'll wait for public comment.
Is there any public comments at this time?
I hope it's working. And Domri Autry, I uh.
Can you state your name and your address?
She just did it.
Domri Autry.
Okay.
And. Uh, we, do we know the true, true amount of people already in Waireka? With the unhoused, the fire victims from Happy Camp, from weed, from from Shastina. And our our number has grown a lot. And I would really like to get a true number.
We have noticed that as well, but we don't currently have a number, but that there's a. When you talk and I, this is kind of obscure, but it it's your meeting, but because it's public comment on the item that we're currently talking about, but I'll just if. I don't know if you want to.
We 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 do not have an estimate for that, but we can follow up with you and and try to see if we can find something for you.
But we, there is a correlation here because if you're unhoused. You know, right after a fire, everybody is very sympathetic to your situation, but after a year, nobody remembers the clamathon fire. Nobody remembers the Slater Fire, nobody will remember the Mill Fire in relation to people are now unhoused. They're unfortunately within Siskiyou County financially, you know, generational um. You know, taking a house from your from your grandfather or whatever, and then not paying for insurance leaves a lot of people in a bind, so we have, we do recognize that. We need to work with the county for a solution on the fact that people are now displaced and homeless in our town based off of these events.
And then the second question relating to that is. Up in Ashland, you know, they had a big fire that came out, they had all those FEMA trailers. We don't have anything. Why don't we have anything? Can we look into that?
That is a, that. If the fire, let's say the McKinney Fire burned down a portion of our town, that would be our event. But this is a Siskiyou County or City of Weed event now, most recently. So technically, your um Siskiyou County Office of Emergency Services works with the state, who then works with FEMA. To bring that response. And I don't have any authority on that, but I certainly have my own opinion.
You tell me who to look for, cool. Okay, and then so why so small, why two stories and not a large complex like the Shasta, this uh. For the elderly people, I can't remember if they're three or four.
So this ordinance is not limited to two story.
Yeah, thirty five feet high.
Thirty five feet is three stories, and actually thirty five feet is the maximum height for most residential areas within the city.
Okay, okay. Um, and then um the cult is that. And the bikes on the sidewalk, are you kind of talking like at the entrance of Green Horn where you can pull that thing out and drive through?
Yes. That's a baller.
Better idea about that, it's like gonna be a horseshoe. And those things can be pulled out and you can drive out. But you're right, bikes on sidewalks are not okay. And um, and then chain link fence. Would only last a year or two at best before you're repairing it, repairing it, repairing it. It's god awful. Who can afford wrought iron? Oh, my God. And cast iron, it breaks. Chain link fence are the only thing that's gonna help this right here stay in the yard, that's why they make dog candles out of chain link. And I know it looks like a prison, because it is.
Thank you.
Lorenzo Love, um, I live just down the street. Uh. For most of my life, my primary primary mode of transportation was bicycles. And bicycles and pedestrians sharing the same space is suicidally dangerous. Uh, whatever you do, you can't have that because we're not talking about little kids riding their bikes, we're talking about adult commuters that travel. Twenty to thirty miles an hour. So you gotta, you can't have them on the sidewalk. At bicycles belong in in the street, in the traffic lanes, bicycles are traffic. So I I hope you understand this, that bicycles are not toys. That you can ride on on the sidewalk. And chain link fence, I I recently bought a house, one of the big selling points of the house, it had chain link fence. Not not only to keep the dogs in, but to keep criminals out. There's a lot of crime in this place, I've had people try to climb over a six foot chain link fence. Till the dog hit the other side of the fence and then decided not a good idea. But you have to keep that in mind, security. Chain link fence provides excellent security, which a lot of these other things don't.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was winking at you, Louis.
Right, and no one's on Zoom, correct? Okay, thank you. Oh, you're good.
Thank you, guys.
Have a nice night. I was gonna say, I have everything I need um for this item, um, and I can bring this back at a future meeting um with the updates um. And then in. Unless you have anything else you guys want to speak on this one. No, this is perfect.
We have any numbers left?
Uh, we do have a general plan twenty forty four uh visioning workshop, um, but we can table this to a future meeting if you would like. Um, just to kind of give an update on this, we did reopen the visioning survey. Um, so there are hard copies available and it is available online, um, we have it advertised on the Waireka General Plan twenty forty four page. Um, in addition to that, um, like I said before, we are finally getting to a spot where everybody's not super busy, so we're able to meet with a number of different organizations now. Um, I have seven meetings set up in the next two weeks, um, in addition to traveling to Anaheim for work, so. Um, we do not have to have this discussion tonight, I just wanted to provide some of the initial results from the survey and just some materials to think about. Um, so if you'd like to table this to a future meeting, we can do that. No, we can just consensus, um, if you want to open it for public comment, if anyone wants to give any, since we did advertise it as a workshop for them. Um, do you have any comments on the vision? Oh, yeah, if you want to come up and give us. Sure, I guess I I'll just give a really quick background, um, we are in a general plan update, and so the city's general plan is our guiding planning document for the future. And it kind of defines on how we wish to grow and develop uh in the next twenty years. And so the planning period we're planning for is uh twenty twenty two through twenty or twenty twenty four through twenty twenty forty four. Um, the city of Waireka did not have a vision statement for two thousand two in their current general plan. So we don't really have a a direction to go towards, there's no really north star that we're looking at. Um, for guiding how we make decisions, how we determine policy in the city. And so we're going through this long, kind of year and a half long process to come up with vision, community goals in different areas. Um, and we're taking a lot of public input on that because we did not have a lot of public outreach that happened at the last general plan. Um, and so we're trying to really get that outreach, so for example, um, no one has done any youth engagement, and so I did the eighth graders at Jackson Street last week, I'm doing the seventh graders this. And so I did the eighth graders at Jackson Street last week. I'm doing the seventh graders this week. Um, they have some actually really interesting input to kind of give to the conversation. Um, but we're also working with community groups to get their input. And it basically is one of those things where there's no wrong answer. We're collecting everything now and trying to see if there's some commonalities between them. So that ultimately we put together this kind of cohesive, forward looking vision statement or guiding principles for the city. So like I said, we do have a, a, there's some examples of different um, vision statements, like for example, Fort Bragg, California is Fort Bragg is a small town with a strong sense of community that seeks to preserve its natural beauty while providing exceptional public facilities, infrastructure, safe streets and a well planned framework for sustainable development and prosperity. So that is what Fort Bragg chose for itself. And so Waireka doesn't have to do that. Waireka can choose what it would like to be. And so we're kind of exploring that aspect. But um, I think just for time tonight, we spent a lot of really good time on the objective ordinance. Um, but we are going to come back and have more conversations about this. So I think if you just want to come up to the microphone and if you have any input for tonight, I'll get that quick and then we can adjourn.
My name is Louise Pleado, and you mentioned the survey for the community. I got on your website and I attempted to take the survey and every time I clicked something, it would disappear. So it's not very user friendly.
When did you go on?
Um, probably last week.
Okay, let me look into that.
And you know, and you mentioned that, you know, the community in terms of how many seniors we have in the community. I'm obviously a senior and there's about twenty percent of us that are seniors and not all seniors either have computers or are, are proficient at using them or knowing how to do this. We're not a bunch of techies. And I couldn't do the survey. I really would have liked to have. So I'm curious to see if, when you did the survey, if you asked them their ages and what kind of responses you got from seniors here in Siskiyou.
Yes, we did. And we actually have hard copies available at City Hall as well. So if you want to come in tomorrow morning or uh, we have those available upfront for you, if you'd like to grab those. Um, we did also send out a postcard letting everybody know we've got some hard copies as well as the online too, but that's a very good point. I'll look into the survey.
I never received that, but I would like to get a bunch of them because I'm having a meeting tomorrow night and I can hand it out at the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. Did you want to give any input on the future of Waireka that you would like to see? If you could come up to the microphone, we record, so it'd be nice to have that, but no pressure.
I'll just keep a brief, uh, Ken Barnes, Waireka resident and business owner. As far as being a minor street business, the overwhelming concern of all of us right now is, you, you can call them unhomed if you want, I call them homeless. Uh, the issues that we have in the downtown area. And, you know, I you can, you can point the finger a lot of places, uh, the state level, the county level, the city level, whatever. But as, as a business person and as a resident, my main, every, every time I think about it is that it's unacceptable. Whatever anybody is doing is unacceptable. Whether it's you guys, whether it's the city council, whether it's the county supervisors, whether it's behavioral health, whether it's the local law enforcement, the justice system, the courts, the, the state, the feds, it's unacceptable. You guys, you know, and I, I hate to lump you guys in with politicians quote, but um, we just are not, you know, the community, the, the ninety nine percent of people that are not homeless are not being represented. It's not fair. And it's not fair to our local businesses. Uh, it's not fair to the tourists that we're trying to attract. I would, you know, I mean, Brian sees it all the time, I know that. But I would, I would welcome any of you to come to the Minor Street Meat Market, sit and watch what happens any day of the week. And uh, if you think it's fair, then, you know, we can have a discussion about that, but it's, it's not acceptable. So we, we need to find a solution. And whether or not that solution is pointing, you know, you know, keep going upstream and we, we have to demand better from our leaders. So that's uh, that's kind of where we're at as a downtown merchants group. I know we're going to be meeting with you.
Next month.
Next, yeah. So uh, you know, I, whatever we need to do. And I guess one comment, when I keep seeing the same person and the same issues that we have with this person, um, it, it's, it's obvious that there are mental health issues. I'm not there to debate that. I'm not here to debate that. But at some point you have to say that that person is not getting whatever they need from behavioral health locally. So at some point, that person, and there's a whole collection of those people, should become a ward of the state. Because they're not getting the, the help they need locally. And I know this isn't a planning commission issue, but it's a city of Waireka issue. And it's, it's, I think it's the biggest issue we face right now. So that's, that's kind of why. Thank you.
Yeah. And I will definitely connect with you and talk to you a little bit more about that, but thank you so much.
Sure. I do have a comment. Minor Street, there's a, I was on the historical committee, but make this some years back, that was dissolved. The one that was dissolved, we were told that the historical committee was going to be tied into the funding.
You are the historic commission.
But we never hear anything about it.
Because you don't, we don't, we never get any applications for you to hear.
It's funny, when I was on the historical, we had it every month and we used to get stuff happening. At least one, two, three things every month, you know, just the lights or something going on about it.
Yeah.
One thing I don't agree with, when I was bringing up this fee that you guys want to charge for open signs.
For which one?
For the open signs on Minor Street, for fifty dollars up to three hundred percent.
So it's a one time fee. So it's uh, the same as like your sign you put on your building, it's you get that one time and you're done. Yeah, that's not, that's okay. You should have, you should have gone to city council last night then, Richard. We advertised it. We noticed it and we had a workshop, you could have shown up.
Cause I had one, when I had my store there, I put one out there and I think that was twenty five dollars. And at that time, the city was against having them on Minor Street and I think they were.
Oh, I think they're cute, but they, they, uh, the big issue with them is liability. But anyway, for today, um, thank you guys so much. Um, we can definitely uh, go into future agenda items if you would like. And um, we will schedule another discussion about this in the future when we have uh, quite a bit of time to dedicate to it. And I'm happy to also meet with you guys in the interim as well, if you want to talk about any of these items on the general plan or have specific questions.
Do we need to cover the future planning events?
I, I think the big announcement is that our next meeting will be at the community center on the other side of town because we'll be doing a design workshop, which kind of involves a little bit more hands on stuff. Um, we will have one public hearing at the beginning and, and kind of conduct the meeting like this as a very formal thing. And then we'll break into more of like an open um, workshop meeting and you don't have to stay for the whole thing if you don't want to. Um, and we'll do that piece just to get input on urban design. Yes, I believe it is October nineteenth is our next meeting, so we'll have that. All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.